Five thirty, we'll call the City Council of Cresco, Iowa, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, meeting to order. Roll call.
Carmen.
Present.
Buska?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Tonight, we'll act on the consent agenda, which consists of approval of the agenda, approval of claims, approval of minutes from September fourth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Roll call.
Buska?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Staff reports, Public Works.
I don't remember if it was last week or the week before, after a meeting, but they got the, there was some sewer lines up on Ninth Street East, up by my place there, that when they did the inspection, the joints were like this far apart, one higher than the next pipe, and dirt was starting to pull in, so they dug them up and fixed those. They pulled out two huge boulders that were sitting on top of them, they got buried over them somehow, and they believe that's probably what part of the problem was. One of them was probably bigger than the pickup bed.
Oh.
Yeah, and they didn't put it in the dump truck, they just hauled it out with the, with the loader, I guess, but you know, it's not that old, but it happens, so that, that got done last week.
Dave, are they gonna come back and fix people's lawns?
Yes, yep, 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 they'll do that. Down by our wellhouse, by Evans Park, they discovered a water leak on Friday, I believe it was, and in order to fix it, they would have to shut off the majority of the south side there, so what they did was, Memertz came in and quick and dug in a new valve, shut-off valve, down by the pickleball courts. You'll see the hole there. They did that on Friday, and I think they're gonna dig tomorrow and see what's going on there. There's a lot of water coming out. I'm not sure what it is, it's, they said it looks kinda odd, but, so they're gonna dig that up tomorrow. Street Department's been working on trees, we've found a few ash trees that have been treated, and they're still dying. We've got one up on block west of your place, or two, there's maybe two or three in the boulevard, and you can see where the leaves up in the top center are going away, and it's been treated every year for, since the ash board came around.
Notice a lot of trees are doing that, though, not just necessarily ashes, and it could be...
Yeah.
You know, because they're struggling for the drought yet, so...
Yep, this particular tree, I don't know, a month to six weeks ago, had a big branch fall, land on their pickup, and it was, it was kinda brittle and stuff, too, so...
It's on City Boulevard?
It is, yep, yep.
What's the street supervisor say, take it down?
That's, that's kinda what, the homeowner said the same thing, and, and you know, he thinks he, they were probably gonna take him down this fall, so, yep. We met, Mike and Nikki and I met with WHKS last week, too, and talked a little bit about the lift station down on the south side. They had some results from smoke tests and so on that were done, I think in two thousand and six, and have some ideas there that we can try and see if we can determine if, if there's a restriction upstream from the, from the lift station, because it, when it forces the, the waste out, it goes to the north, and it's a pretty simple test, we'll probably do it ourselves, and just see if, how fast that, the waste leaves the well. If it's restricted down, or upstream, I should say, I guess, af, or downstream, then we'll, we know what it is. Doesn't mean it's gonna be easy to fix or cheap, but at least we know what's going on there. So that's something we're gonna work on.
So siding out with that, so since they're deciding to do WHK, using WHKS with information, we're not gonna do the PSA for program that was on the agenda last time?
Yep, yep, yep. And then, the, the last thing I have is, I wanna put a bug in your ear about snow removal coming this winter, and it's, I brought it up before, there's several lots around town where people are piling private snow onto city parking lots, and Stan and Gary and Dean and I drove around last week, just so we could show them what we're talking about. There's probably four or five different spots where this has been happening for a while, and I don't know, we tried to estimate how much snow we're talking about, and it's hard to say based on snowfall, but they could easily have twenty loads of snow that they haul away after a snow, snowfall, and...
Twenty loads of private snow?
Yep, 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 and it could be more, depending on how much snow we get. I looked up a, a volume calculator, and, and I estimate the lots we're talking about are somewhere between an acre and an acre and a half, and if we'd get a four-inch snow on one acre of land, it's over five hundred cubic yards. The dump trucks hold ten to fifteen yards at most.
I think it concerned, a solid figure would be ten yards max.
Right, yeah, yeah.
On a big truck.
And, and granted, snow compacts, you know, so they're not hauling away, you know, the, the yards of snow aren't equalling the loads, but it's a fair amount of snow, and you know, last winter, we didn't get much snow, who knows what this, this winter's gonna bring, so, I mean, we have a, a few, few options, and I'm not asking anyone to decide. It may be a separate council meeting or a separate work session, but we've, you know, discussed moving forward as is, which is, people aren't supposed to plow snow on private, or private snow onto the public land, so I don't see how that can be an option. Other cities charge so much per square foot, you know, if you've got a parking lot that's, you know, ten by ten, and you get a per rate once a year, you could pay to push that out. It might be hard to keep track of, you know, when we get behind some of these businesses up here. And then we're also doing that, we're also kinda competing with other people who haul snow and stuff like that, and, and the third option, I guess, would be, I mean, if they wanna pile it there, that's fine, but they gotta get it out right away, somebody else does. So something, something to think about, if, if you wanna talk one-on-one about it, I'll, certainly, we can talk about it, I can show you what we're talking about. I think it's, it's worthy of either the next meeting, or, or hour meeting, hour, hour ahead of time, maybe to sit down and talk about it.
So they, downtown, they just plow it out onto the street, then we move it, right?
So like, behind the businesses, for instance?
Behind.
Yep.
What are we doing out front, though?
There, they, they take, you know, if they, when they clean their sidewalk off, it goes in the street, you know, we clean it up, you know, if, if, if we plow snow by, say we're done at six o'clock on North Elm, and they don't come in till nine, well, then it's gonna sit there, because there's usually cars there and stuff, and, and they'll, you know, they may come in the next day and clean that up, depending on how much is there, but...
I believe the ordinance says they're not supposed to do that either.
Right.
Well, it isn't fair, because some businesses are hauling their snow away.
Right, yep, yep.
Some are letting us haul it away.
Yep, yep.
I, I think going forward, you know, it's a problem that needs to be addressed, but we need to, we need to find out, you know, these, these businesses, and have a visitor talk with them.
Right.
And come up to a decision. It's something we've been doing for a lot of years, you just don't wanna pull the rug out of.
Yeah, and then maybe that's what we do, is we have a meeting and invite, you know, here's what we're gonna talk about tonight, and then bring everybody in, the snow movers, too.
Wouldn't that be more of a conversation during the day with you in your office?
I mean, it sure could be. I mean, it's, I guess it's what we, what we're gonna do moving forward, how we're gonna address the issue, so, I mean, yeah, if, if, if we decide what we wanna do, I have no problem talking with everybody about it, but whatever procedure we wanna do, so.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, that's what I have.
Thank you. Two, please. Thanks, Tim. Three, administration.
CIP information was handed out to the department heads last week. We'll be sending out RFPs for the next couple of years of audit, so I'll need two council members to assist with reviewing proposals to make recommendations to council. The Northeast Iowa League is regrouping. This group is very similar to the Iowa League of Cities, but just as a smaller section of the state. The meetings and trainings are open to all city staff and council, so I'll let you know when they're being scheduled. I'll be attending clerk school at the beginning of October. I sent out an email earlier today about an upcoming event from Upper Explorer Land for best city practices in Wakan on the fifteenth of October. It's open for council, city staff, volunteers, and business owners. Fall yard waste pickups will resume October fifteenth, it needs to be up by seven AM, and have about a hundred and twenty-five lead service lines to still, either the water department needs to get in and verify, or just have not been able to get in touch with them yet.
All right, thanks, Nikki. Committee updates.
There was an airport meeting last week, and their concerns were the piles, and then also the, the repairs to the runway that was being done, so that'll be right after they're done doing their spring and cover crop, and we'll be going in there to fix the runways. We did have a great big hole, and it looks like, we think a meteor hit out here, it's about this big. You can't find where the dang thing landed, because it could be half a mile away or something. Somebody could've had it in their house. Then we had a fitness center meeting, which I just said that they're coming back with the proposal with, I'm trying to get it on one page, so I didn't wanna come here with twelve pages to present to you. And then, the only other part was the pickleball court. Their, the lighting is still not good enough on the ends. They wanted to know if we could do something there, or add it to the budget, or whatever, so I said, I'd bring it to you.
I think they have about eight thousand left in pickleball funds, but I'd have to verify them now.
I think they're gonna have to put a pole in. I don't know what that would cost.
The whole lighting situation, I mean, they need to put some kinda timer on the lighting or something.
That's, that was talked.
Yeah, that's kind of a...
Yeah, that's kinda dumb. We don't need to light it up all night.
No, and you gotta know the code, if you're gonna, and then you gotta unlock the box, and then you gotta turn the breakers on, it's kind of, needs to be upgraded.
Then there was a discussion on putting bleachers in there, and I just, I got caught on that one, or caught off guard on that one, I didn't even know nothing about it, where they're having tournaments, they wanna add bleachers on it where they could sit someplace to watch them, so. I was looking at it, it was on the north side, somebody told me it was on the west side, I didn't think it was...
Brandon came, came to me, and it's, it's an Eagle Scout project, so I don't know how much of that is Eagle Scout project, but him and Dean and I met down there somewhere in the last week or ten days, and, and yeah, it was on the west side there, is what they're thinking, and, and then you mentioned the north side, and...
On their diagram, it says on the north side.
Yeah, so.
They, they had some tables out there, they got really close to the lane, because I had to go back to the wellhouse, and I guess my, my interest would be, they have to stay away from the...
Yeah, so tight in there.
driveway.
Yeah.
Either that, or we gotta relocate the driveway. Which, there's a big hole in the driveway, by the way.
Mm-hmm, from the water leak, or more?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, okay, there's a big hole there from that, too.
Anything else?
I'll touch base with what he just said, too. Brandon actually got quotes for doing asphalt up at the lodge, instead of doing concrete, and it was about thirty thousand instead of eighty for concrete, so he's actually going with asphalt.
He's already done.
I was gonna say, I think it might already be done, so I know they're gonna move pretty fast on it. Wendy did give me an update as far as the theater as well. Looney Lutherans was very well attended, a hundred and nine people, and after all expenses, we made just over two thousand. Dave Gosh and her met with an architect and engineer for the scene shop to work out the mechanical details. With the timing of final drawings, we're looking at bringing things to council at the end of the year, beginning of next year, and look to go for bids in the beginning of next year as well. The ride for Edie Slifka went very well. All proceeds will go to the scene shop, and we'll have a final donation total at the next meeting. The live event with Colton Snyder was canceled, I believe that was supposed to be this coming weekend, due to him failing to sell enough tickets and had priced them a little too high. The next live event is, is the Lee Harden Comedy Show, and that's on October nineteenth.
Yeah, usually go to the theater meetings, but they're meeting right now.
Yeah, she said you were on the last one.
Can't make both.
The library meeting was tonight, too, they had to change it.
I just had one quick thing, too, that, I meant, talked to a few of you here, but not probably everybody. They did start leveling the dirt out at the airports today, so the big pile will still be there, the dirt's been leveled, and I did get an estimate from Scott Humke, if we wanna put a pipe in, out there, too, but I think from, from the drain out to the pond, but I think there might be a better option, so we'll have to talk about that, maybe at the Public Works Committee level, or before we do anything with it, or see where, I guess...
The pond is dry. I was in the pond today, I walked down there. There's still water in the, in the waterway coming down, there's a couple spots in there that, for the most part, it's...
But there are some, some pools out there yet, and that water shouldn't be there, it should've drained through last Thursday or Friday. I went and looked down, the vertical structure there, and there's no water coming in from the, from the pond itself.
From tile.
From the tile, so, yeah.
Whatever happened, there was a tile or culvert, I'm not sure, it was coming west to east towards the ditch, and there was some thought that it had gotten caught.
Put that on, okay?
No, it was on...
There was one...
Airport land.
There was, there was one, with the, the pile of dirt that's gonna be there for a few months. There's one right there that got removed and did not get put back, and that water that gets there comes from Wayne Moss's group, that new pad.
Yeah.
And in all the big rains we've had, which isn't a lot, there's never, the water's disappearing.
Yeah, it's never been there.
It's not staying there, it's not cooling, yeah.
I was just concerned, because there was some talk that a tile line had been caught.
If you guys haven't been out there for a while, it's interesting to drive out there, check it out, even with all the mowing and the dirt being leveled now, it's starting to come together, looking very nice.
It's like it's got a big haircut.
Ragweed.
Right, ragweed and buttonweed, but...
I'll, I'll look at it after the ragweed.
Not until we get it frosted.
Any other committee updates? If not, we'll go to comments from the audience. All right, on to new business. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the twenty twenty-four Northeast Iowa Regional Housing Trust Fund pledge form.
This is just the form that Chris brought last week, we talked about that, twelve thousand five hundred, so they need the pledge form filled out to be able to get the grant from the state.
So wait.
Second.
Roll call.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Item number two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a water tower space lease agreement with my broadband.
Question about that. How is, that seems dirt cheap.
So it's the same as the other one, that's up there, too, has upper Iowa communications, so they're the same.
And how is the electric credit figured? I mean, was it, they pay us, they use our electricity, but...
I don't know if we, we talked about it. Were we ever able to go back and see when they placed them to see how much they increased it?
Not that I was involved in.
I mean, I saw they're renting our, they're renting space on our water tower for four hundred dollars a year, isn't it? Four hundred and eighteen dollars, or something like that?
Yeah, and I think that it's...
These are one-year lease agreements, correct?
Correct, mm-hmm.
With automatic renewal.
Yeah, so if you wanna, yeah, we could change it next year, too.
You bring up a good point with everything going up, you know, is this something we need to take a look at? Because there's a lot of hardware hanging on that tower.
Well, what would it cost them to build a tower for their own stuff?
Are you saying that we should raise it now?
Well, I'm just saying, it seems super cheap, and I, I thought, if we're powering their transfer, our transmitters for the whole year, we're only charging them five hundred bucks? I don't know. I mean, those trans, transmitters are on twenty-four hours a day, I don't know how much electrical load, but it doesn't take too long on something like that, it takes you five hundred dollars.
And you could reach out to other cities, I guess, and see what they're receiving, and...
I think we should, you know, we, we're obligated to go forward at this point with them, but...
Do you guys wanna discuss it, say, maybe next June?
We need to take a look at it.
Because then we could look at both of them at the same time, give us plenty of time to...
Hopefully Big Fire has their stuff up there.
Oh, did they ever go up there?
Wendy tells me they're up there, and they're trying, but we still don't have service at Evans.
And that would be one thing that, depending next year, I mean, that might be a negotiating point.
Are they there at no charge, and, but then they provide us with plus?
Correct. Okay, so maybe next June, to follow up.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Second.
We get the typo fixed, but...
Yes, on both, on both of them.
So we're not locked, we're only locked in for this year, we can renegotiate next year.
Yep. McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Item number three, second reading of the summary of proposed ordinance five oh eight, amending section sixty-nine point one zero and section seventy point oh three, and adding chapter eighty-two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa, pertaining to declaring a snow emergency, parking regulations, and parking violations. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances to the City of Cresco, Iowa, by adding provisions pertaining to declaring a snow emergency parking, parking regulations and parking violations. Blow is a summary of ordinance five oh eight, a full copy of ordinance may be obtained between eight and four thirty PM. Weekdays at City Hall, one thirty, North Park Place, Cresco, Iowa, five two one three six, or on the city's website at www.cityofcresco.com. Purpose: To implement the ordinance for declaring a snow emergency when snow accumulations to a depth of two inches or more, modifying the parking regulations and violations. Section one, modifying section, modifying section sixty-nine point one zero and seventy point oh three, and adding chapter eighty-two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa. The fine for parking restrictions, or violating parking restrictions, except improper use of persons with disabilities' parking permit is twenty dollars and will increase to twenty-five dollars after thirty days pursuant to the Iowa Code, section three twenty-one point four zero. A list of all delinquent and unpaid parking fines will be provided to the county treasurer for collection. All fines must be paid prior to renewing any motor vehicle registrations. The simple notice of a fine or, for improper use of persons with disabilities' parking permit is one hundred dollars. Section two, severability clause: If any section, any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of its ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof, not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law. Roll call.
Kriener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Just, just a minute. Back when you asked the question about electricity, in this lease, this is electricity, during the initial term of this, the leasing, she'll pay the leasing reimbursement for access to the electricity, the sum of two hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty cents annually. Set electricity rate will increase by three percent per year. So they, they do pay that.
Yeah, they pay the electricity, but I mean, it seems...
Well, I mean, I thought you were saying that they weren't paying electricity.
No, they, I knew they paid, it just seemed so cheap.
Yeah.
Like, you know, I mean, it's not metered, we're just doing it for a flat amount, and it's like, like I say, I don't know how much power their transmitters draw twenty-four hours a day, but...
I was thinking when you first were saying it, because God, they were just paying four hundred eighty-one dollars, and that was everything.
No, I, like I say, I read through it, and I thought, looks like they're getting a bargain to be here.
Is that one of the seventy meters there?
Don't get me started on the number of meters we have, but what I was kinda trying to think is, that could be coming off of the solar. The, the solar there powers the streetlights, the stoplights, and it might be powering the tower. But, but it was when we put the stoplights on there, that the solar became inadequate, so now we're having to pay rather than just, because there's a lot more. Those stoplights draw a lot of juice, but I think it was covering whatever else, but I, I'm not sure if the tower's hooked onto that, or if it has a separate meter.
How do we verify it, anything by now?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can look at the hills.
We can maybe put a energy monitor on it, and see how much they're actually using.
No, there's a monitor downstairs.
Even if we gotta buy them, those are pretty cheap, and a way better idea what they're using.
I figure around four hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
For the snow ordinance, I did have Dave start looking into getting replacement snow signs, because I believe the ones coming into town, say, November fifteenth through April fifteenth.
Right, and we'll have to figure out what we wanna put there, if anything, and the end of the night, I talked about that a little bit today, and not sure...
It's in the back, isn't it?
Because the question is, if somebody from out of town comes and goes to your house, and they park on the wrong side of the road, and you forget to tell them, then I guess they get a ticket. And not that anybody reads signs coming into town, anyway, but...
So you better remember, Stan.
Yeah.
Don't park your car out there.
Yeah.
I got plenty of parking places, I don't park them.
And I, I guess that's a good question, do we need the signs? I mean, I drive into Decor, Proton, and Bridgeway, I don't know if they have some of it. They probably do, they may not, I don't know.
A lot of towns do those, snow ordinance in effect, even on parking.
Yeah, but even so, you still have to know what that means. And I don't know, I suppose ours will be on our website, I don't know how easy it'll be to find, we can make it, maybe easy, but...
We'll make it as easy as we can.
Yeah, we'll figure that out and talk about it again, I'm sure.
All right, item number four, second reading of the summary of proposed ordinance number five thirteen, amending chapter one thirty-eight of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa, for the twenty twenty-four amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan. Chapter one fifty-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa, Urban Renewal Update. Purpose: To update the urban renewal area by removing commercial urban renewal area amendment number three, and commercial urban renewal area amendment number four areas, and add right-of-way to connect the remaining portions of the area.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Item number five, third reading of proposed ordinance five fourteen, which amends chapter
one sixty-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa, zoning change for one fourteen, Seventh Street West, from M one to C two. Being enacted by the City Council of Cresco, Iowa, as follows. Section one, the purpose of this ordinance is to change the present zoning classification on the zoning map for the following property description, which is currently zoned M one, mixed parcels of property at one one four, Seventh Street West, to be rezoned to C two, Central Business Commercial District, Lot two dash A, Lot one dash one dash two, Lot two dash seven, and Lot two of two and a hundred feet, R R O W I R S U R V S E, and Lot two of seven, S, or southwest, Howard County, Iowa. Section two, severability clause: If any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof, not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law.
I didn't make up those numbers.
I'm just saying, but I'm not the only one who doesn't know what those mean.
So the, the first one is railroad right-of-way, that's the R R O W.
You helped me out last time.
I thought about this, like this, and then I R, I believe, is regular, so...
Okay.
That's my thought, I'm not saying I'm wrong.
I have a codification reviewed, and they're like, I think he has some typos, I'm like, I don't.
We should probably table that till next meeting, so he could read it again.
Thanks, Stan.
You need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call.
Buska?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Item number six, approval of ordinance number five fourteen, rezoning one one four, Seventh Street West, from M one to C two, in the City of Cresco, Iowa.
So moved. Perfect.
Roll call.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Item number seven, second reading of proposed ordinance five one six, which amends chapter one sixty-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa, zoning change for three twenty-one Vernon Road, from C one to R two. Being enacted by the City of Cresco, Iowa, as follows. Section one, the purpose of this ordinance is to change the present zoning classification on the zoning map for the following property description, which is currently zoned as C one, Commercial District, parcels of property at three twenty-one[1711.75] one Commercial District parcels of property at three twenty-one Vernon Road to be rezoned to the R two Light Density Residential District, lot fifteen seventeen E X E two hundred feet, lot seventeen and E X W seventeen point eight feet and sixty-one point five feet, lot seventeen I R Survey East, half northeast Howard County, Iowa. Section two severability clause. If any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be invalid, adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity as an ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage approval and publication as provided by law.
Second.
Roll call.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Crainer.
Yes.
Buska. Yes.
Number eight, possible motion to waive third reading of proposed ordinance five sixteen.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Crainer.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Item number nine, possible motion to approve ordinance number five sixteen, rezoning three two one Vernon Road from C one to R two in the City of Cresco, Iowa.
I'll move that.
Second it.
Carmen.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Crainer.
Yes.
Item number ten, first reading of proposed ordinance five seventeen, which amends five zero point zero six and adding section five zero point zero eight pertaining to nuisance abatement procedure methods of service and habitual offenders. Being enacted by the, the City Council of the City of Cresco, Iowa as follows. Section one, chapter fifty, nuisance abatement procedure in the Code of, of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is hereby amended by amending section five zero point zero six and adding section five zero point zero eight as follows. The existing section five zero point zero two is hereby repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. Five zero point zero two, notice may be in the form of an ordinance or delivered by any of the following methods, first class mail with certificate of mailing, certified mail, in-person delivery, delivery by law enforcement officer, posting of the notice in a conspicuous place on premises where the nuisance exists, or by any other delivery service such as FedEx or UPS. Section two, new section, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is amended by adding section fifty point zero eight habitual violators, which is hereby adopted to read as follows. Fifty point zero eight habitual violators, any person who is found to have violated this article three or more times within a thirty-six month period at any address in this city shall be deemed a habitual violator. In addition to other remedies set forth in the above sections, when it is determined by the department that a nuisance exists and/or that a person is a habitual violator, the city may file a civil action in the district court seeking an order enjoining the person from further violation of this article on real property owned or controlled by such person or real property where such person acts as an agent, tenant, or leasing of any residential dwelling, commercial establishment, and/or real property within the city. The city may further request upon entry of the injunction that the court allow the city to abate further violations without notice and/or seek an order of contempt. All other provisions of chapter fifty being sections fifty point zero one and two and including fifty point oh seven shall remain the same unchanged in full force and effect. The foregoing amended section fifty point zero two and fifty point zero eight shall be in full force and effect from and after the date and passage of the publication of this ordinance as provided by law. Section three severability clause. If any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage approval and publication as provided by law.
Second.
Roll call. Whoop, sorry.
Comment that Iowa law is really clear, that the delivery method has to be by certified mail or maybe in person.
By ordinance.
By ordinance or by certified mail. Dave has an opinion from our lawyers that the other ones are okay. I just don't understand how that can be. The law says certified mail or by ordinance. And all the problems Dave has had, I understand why we want to change it, but I just, I just don't understand how this is legal.
Right. And I mean, I showed you the opinion.
Yeah, yeah, and I. I still don't understand how it's legal.
Right.
So anyway, so.
Okay.
And I sent him exactly what I sent the, you guys and gals a month ago or whatever. So I just forwarded that email to him.
Roll call.
Buska.
No.
Crainer.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
On number eleven, I had it brought to my attention that we have run into this in the past where we have waived second and third readings and it's come back to haunt us because the person was on vacation, didn't realize that it was on the, that it was on the agenda until the, it would have been the second meeting and suggested that the third reading be waived, but never the second. But item eleven is the possible motion to waive the second and third readings of proposed ordinance five seventeen.
Well, I don't know how anybody could really object to that though, you know, I mean.
The situation was that it was a property that was rezoned and they were on vacation, they didn't realize that it was on the agenda for that night. They found out after the fact that it was voted on and then they waived the further readings.
For this one, habitual offender could object to it.
But.
It's just pretty much the procedure for methods of service, so that's the big issue.
No, but we're adding habitual offender on it. It didn't exist before. It says we shouldn't come on their property with, with court orders.
Court orders. Which it's kind of in effect today, this just maybe puts it out there so everybody might see it too and.
So basically if they're habitual offender, the city may file a civil action in the district court.
And we're kind of doing that right now with one, actually, two, so. Yeah, I, I, I think it's, I think it'll be a good idea. I think if we, if people know that that's an option, they might be more apt to clean up their property too. Especially the people that own multi, multi houses and properties and apartments and stuff like that and.
I, no, I, I agree with the ordinance in its entirety. It was just regarding the second and third readings was all, so.
I think in this case, I'll move we pa, or we waive the second and third reading because we got so many people that haven't picked up their certified mail and. But let's, let's think this through. You want to waive the second and third, this is a new, new procedure coming in, it's going to have some teeth.
Mm-hmm. It's good, it's probably, it's not any new teeth, but it, it may be.
Well, you're going after habitual violators, it's just something we've never had in the past.
Maybe, I mean, I think of one over by the fairgrounds.
Yes.
And so I believe, I believe these options have always been there, they're just not maybe spelled out. Maybe spelled out.
Okay.
What, I guess I might ask a question, what do we get in the second and third part of this?
You don't get to watch me stumble through reading it?
So if you waived it today, it would become in effect on September twenty-fifth. You say if you chose to do the second reading on the seventh, then it'll become effective on October sixteenth.
So it's about an extra three weeks.
Yeah.
But you said we're already taking action on some of these habitual.
Kind, well, one, one. Yeah, and with winter coming, you know, some of the nuisance stuff is going to slow down.
There's a habitual offender and we're taking action against them, though, I mean, they can run a, they, they can't say that we can't come after them because they didn't know the ordinance. I mean, all they got to do is clean the mess up and they're done, they're up.
Sure sounds easy.
I like the direction this is going, I mean, we got to do something because it costs a lot of money to go after these things. Would we be better suited to read the second and third and do everything, but so there's no coming back on us and on, on that part of this nuisance thing?
I, I'm just really theoretically opposed to waiving the second and third readings because of what Alex said. I mean, they're, we're not here to make it easy for Alex, no offense meant. We're here to hopefully preserve and expand the rights of the citizens of Cresco. Now, I did vote to waive the one on the rezoning because for the best of my knowledge, we contacted everybody.
Everybody's been talked to there.
Who would touch it and they all agreed. I mean, because if I came in three weeks later and said I object, you probably wouldn't listen to me because I live on the other side of town. So I think that's kind of a special case. But what does it cost us to read it? You already say that you've got the, the habitual offender, you can go after them under.
Yeah. This, this just spells it out, so I would hope it would open people's eyes.
So I mean, what's the real object? I mean, we want to get it so they clean it up, right?
To clean it up and then, you know, just some, get some more stuff done, get more, more nuisances cleaned up before winter. Because once, once it snows, I think it's going to be hard to know what's under your snow.
So I mean, I understand what you're saying is get it done and get it done before winter, where if we don't, it gives them an extra three weeks.
Yeah.
I would agree with Amy in that I don't basically like the idea of waiving the readings, but in this particular situation, I don't know who's going to get upset or come back on us. We're already proceeding in this direction.
Yeah, because they're habitual anyway. So it's, it's more to, less happened several times with them. I can understand if it's one person and it's, they're gone, but. So what hurts, what does it hurt if we say you got to read the second reading, but you waive the third reading?
Well, we can certainly do that as a compromise. Yeah. I mean, where do you, where do you reach a point where you, you have to go door to door and, and do this?
I know, I know.
So I mean, that only, that's, that's another two weeks or three weeks, so what's, I think we could do that.
And that's, that's up to you guys.
Well, some of the people, they would be upset if we waived it because they've been running us in circles about not picking up certified letters and now all of a sudden they'll get it delivered to their door.
I think we should do the second reading and then not the third.
I, I tend to agree with that myself.
Okay. So on the next agenda, put possible motion to waive.
Possible motion to waive that third reading.
Okay.
So we'll skip item twelve then.
Yep.
Item thirteen, resolution authorizing the mayor into a facilities use agreement with Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging.
So this is a two-year agreement for them to rent the lodge for senior males.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Crainer.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, resolution accepting the annual urban renewal report of the City of Cresco, Iowa for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four, directing the city clerk to file the report with the State of Iowa Department of Management.
Second it.
So this one's actually a zero report because we don't use TIF. So next year it'll actually look a little different because some of the urban renewal areas are going to fall off of it, so. So who made the motion? Give me a second. Carmen.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Crainer.
Yes.
Item fifteen, discuss camper and boat parking on city streets.
Do you want to come up too? We've been, Chief and I have been discussing this and, and. Basically, a lot of it's the overnight camper parking and trailer parking and stuff on the streets. I know, Rich, we've talked about it several times too. And where'd you find this one at?
So I've been on several different websites, just looking at Iowa, you know, typing in certain keywords. And I know that we have one that was in Milwaukee, I believe. And then, yeah, Des Moines and Cedar Rapids. But, you know, a lot of these towns are obviously more congested than what Cresco is, but I would say that we have a lot of personal property that is parked on the city streets.
Right.
You know, it's great to have toys, but, you know, I don't think the city streets should be.
All right.
I would like to see if we can come up with some kind of a, an ordinance which would say, you know, you know, RVs, campers, boat trailers, personal trailers, you know, car haulers, whatever, parked on the street. Now, I do understand that some of the guys in construction have trailers around town, you know, during the course of their work. I understand that, but that might be something that where, if they're going to do some work in someone's house, maybe they should come, you know, give us some kind of notification, basically say when the work's going to start, when it's going to end. So that way the officer would know too that, hey, it's legal to park there for a reason because it is doing work.
Yeah.
I just don't think that everybody should probably have their, their recreational vehicles parked out on the street.
Right. And this talked about eighteen wheelers, big trucks and tractors were treated the same, I believe, correct?
Yeah. And I know that we do have, you know, a lot of guys that bring their semis home, they'll park them out at the airport. There's ample parking.
Right. And, and then a lot of them park in town or?
I'm seeing more and more that are not using that and they're winding up on the streets.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, or running it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you and I've talked about that one, um, but you.
Right.
I think actually, I looked, I thought we had a noise ordinance that covers that.
I looked at that once too, I'd have to go back and read it again, I know it talks about.
It says right here, truck parking, noise, no such vehicle should be left standing or parked upon any street, alley, public or private parking lot, or driveway of any service station between the hours of nine PM and six AM with the engine, air compressor, refrigerating equipment, or any device in operation giving off audible sounds, accepting of the driveway of a service station when actually being serviced.
The worst is when they park these semis up tight to these stop signs and you roll into an intersection and you're literally into the intersection before you can see right or left and then with kids walking down the streets and sidewalks and stuff, I mean.
Problem here, I mean, I agree with where we're going, but we're giving a period of forty-eight consecutive hours. We've had rules like that before and what they do is they go out and move it six inches and then another forty-eight hours, so how are we going to prevent that?
Well, see, these are from other entities, obviously, other.
So you're just saying no parking on the street?
I would say none.
Nope, no gray street, no twenty-four hours.
You know, maybe a, a two hour, I mean, I understand you've got to load and unload your camper sometimes.
Yeah. We saw one that had a two-hour window.
Yeah, you got to load and unload maybe your boat, but, you know, get the thing put away.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen.
How do you enforce that? Is that, is that, is that your guys' one?
That'll be one of ours, there'll be a parking.
Were you saying, Rich, or Richard?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, we got one neighbor that's three months parked there.
And then, you know, then you have these campers that just, you know, they'll be gone for a couple of days and then they bring them back and park them again, but they've got ample, there's a lot of places that ample on, on their own property to park this down.
Or in back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think make it simple, just no parking on the city streets.
Yeah, when it comes to certain items like that. And like I said, when it comes to businesses, you're in construction and stuff like that and you've got to have a trailer there, come in and let us know.
Right.
You know, assign something like a start date and an end date. Let us know. And obviously if we're not going to have, hopefully, a, a trailer just parked in one spot for five months.
Right.
You know, it'll work.
The one thing we don't, I, I agree that we need to clean up these streets somehow, but I don't want to penalize independent contractors, guys that, that will pull up in front of a house in a residential area and leave their vehicle set there for three, four, five days a week.
No.
Semis, I'm, I'm starting to see more and more of these rolling into residential areas, blocking vision on anything, something's got to be done in there.
Yeah, blocking that stop sign, I don't know what street that's on, but. Tell it on your holler one.
Yeah. So, I mean, these are things that we've just been talking about, discussing, and I think we could probably get an ordinance put together and maybe have a look at.
Can we add not parking in front yards?
That's in there.
It's already in there.
Ready.
No, it's on boulevards.
I know you can't park campers in front yards.
That's maybe in the RV section.
But I'm talking about.
Oh, cars and trucks individually. Oh, cars and trucks individually.
Well, and trailers. I think if you walk around, you'll find trailers in front.
So, this one says recreational vehicles are allowed to be parked upon the boulevard or front yard for more than 48 hours.
Yeah. I'm talking about trailers.
Yeah. You get into Lake Waterloo, I was looking at some of their ordinances, Cedar Falls, they've got a lot more descriptive, you know, where you can park it on your property, what it's got to be on as far as the base. It can't be on grass. It's got to be on gravel or a cement path. I mean, they've got a lot more stringent rules. But then you... I also looked at some of them and just said, hey, you can park it behind your property on your grass, go right ahead. But just behind your house.
Right.
Yeah. So, 81.03, number five, says recreational vehicles, small utility or boat trailers, with or without a boat, may be stored in a rear yard, providing that no living quarters shall be maintained or any business conducted in connection therewith while such trailer is parked or stored.
On a utility, because that would cover what I'm thinking of. There's one that just looks really ugly.
Yeah. So, that cover RV, small utility or boats.
When would this have to be ready, Tim?
I mean, I don't know how long it can take to get it going, but...
I'd like to read, look this over.
I mean, I don't know if the one that's handed out is... shuffled it away. Would be the final one, was it?
Not 48 hours.
Yeah, this one is not. And...
I think we're going to have to grab some ideas from several of them.
And meld them into one?
Yep. That would go, might meet the best interest of everybody.
I mean, if the goal is no parking in the streets for more, let's say, more than two hours, I mean, does anybody have any issues with that? Do you think that's okay?
I don't agree with two hours. I mean...
Eight hours then?
Yeah, I don't know. Do you think two hours is too short?
I do. I mean...
I mean, aside from the construction people working, let's say you hire someone to shingle your house. I'm talking aside from those. I mean...
You know, somebody pulls in, they get home from... And I'm just going to use this hypothetical camping over the weekend. You know, they pull up and got their camper parked out in front of their building, you know, and they're running kids to school, get groceries, unload camper, get hauled over here to do something else, you know? I'm sure as hell they don't want to be standing there waiting for the clock to hit two o'clock so you can ride them up.
Would overnight be different?
I think there's got to be some leeway in this thing.
No parking overnight, for instance?
I mean, what's you guys' biggest, that you see out there? I mean, from a professional, from a safety standpoint, what do we need to do to make the streets a safer place?
Well, I would say that it's a lot of campers, just personal trailers.
A lot of personal trailers. Obviously, there are some places that have their construction vehicle or construction trailers blocking up very tiny roads in some places in Cresco, which usually isn't a big deal, but when you can park on both sides, you know, at least very narrow room for everybody, and that includes personal trailers as well. If it's a nomads thing, if we're going to do it with contractors, why don't we just make personal vehicles sign up and let us know that they're going to be there just like everybody else, I guess.
I mean, you can drive around town. There's always somebody working on a vehicle that's sitting in the street that's got an oil puddle underneath that's been there for days, weeks, you know? I mean, I wondered one on the west side of town that cut a wheel off and a jack underneath it, and was there a couple, several days anyway. You know, stuff like that shouldn't happen.
You've got an oil puddle under them. That's a violation right there.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I've seen it where across from me, they did, the one guy moved his camper in the back, but he put three trailers out in front, the vehicles, or two trailers out front, two vehicles, and he still has an opening in his driveway. So, I mean, I looked at it from a safety standpoint. I always get nailed by a lady that's walking, and she's got to walk behind the campers to not get clobbered on the street because, you know, we don't have sidewalks on all our places. But, I mean, you shouldn't have to worry about walking down the street and, you know, and walking between campers and stuff either. The other part of causes to me, it's funny that Hawkeye sanitation isn't in your complaint because a lot of times the campers cause, well, they got to come in and...
Oh. And... Can't reach their trash cans?
Yeah. They can't get their trash...
I don't know what they do if they can't reach them. Do they get out and move them?
Oh, I can tell you one, they don't get out and move them.
We've gotten a lot of complaints that they won't get out and move them.
No, they won't do it.
Rightfully so.
They just won't pick it up.
Because usually, it's just one guy and that new one.
Right.
So, he's not going to get out.
So, whenever they call and say that, then we tell them to call Hawkeye. I mean, that's really between them. So, they're trying to stay out of it.
Sure.
I agree. Something's got to be done. I think we've got to refine it. But, you know, we got to make the streets safe, but at the same time, you know, I don't think we want to be hovering over them.
Well, no. And I don't know the best way to enforce this. I don't know.
I mean, some of the camper stuff is probably going to be eliminated here in a couple...
Your bigger items.
Yeah, you can have it. But we do have tra... I don't want trailers out in the street and they're plowing around them.
Why don't we talk about it?
I was going to say, some of those people are like contractors or something. We could have some stickers in here. Stop by City Hall, get a sticker, put it on your back window. Cops won't bother you. You got a week or two weeks or something like that. So, you can just drive by, see the red dot in the back window and know it's an approved construction trailer or something. I'd like to spend a little time on this, and I'm going to talk to several contractors. I know guys that do that, that pull their truck and trailer. And I'm going to ask them, you know, what's a agreeable solution for everybody. I don't agree with you. If you're going to buy a camper, it's not the city's responsibility to have it parked out in front of their house for three, four months at a time, you know?
But wait a minute. I think we all agree that a small business owner, it's okay. The only question is, how are we going to let you know that it's okay? And we'd have to determine some way, you know, are you really a contractor? Are you just somebody who wants to have a trailer out in front of someplace? It seems to me the question you were raising was RVs or boat trailers or something like that, not small businesses. Is that correct?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
So, the question is zero or 24 hours or something like that? The problem I see is if it's 24 hours, then, well, when did we see it last?
That's what it is now, right?
And the thing is, so some of these ordinances, I mean, because obviously, we'll see trailers just out there with no vehicle attached to them.
Oh, yeah.
But some of these ordinances say that if you're going to park your vehicle out in the street, then it better have a motor vehicle attached to it.
Right.
That way it's moving.
Then you just have twice as many vehicles, twice as many things in the road too, but...
Yeah.
I know. We can look around and see...
More discussion. But we're on the right path, but where do you find that happy medium?
Yeah, I'm kind of with them. I don't think there's a medium beyond, much beyond 24 hours. Why can't you get the boat unloaded or your camper unloaded in 24 hours?
Well, I mean, and the thing is, so, like with a vehicle, you have the option to tow it. We're not going to be towing campers and towing boats and this and that. I mean, we have no place to tow.
I don't think the biggest issue is, we're talking about construction trailers. Most of the stuff that I see is campers, boats, and stuff like that. I mean, I don't see a lot of construction trailers. I really don't.
Recreational vehicles.
And I'd like to add, when you're looking at things, the front yard thing.
Right. I know I've seen some cities require anything parked on, has to be on cement or gravel, which...
Yeah, that's... I don't care if they park on grass, but I think it looks ugly to have a fairly good-sized utility trailer right in front of the house. And I told you about the one that I keep complaining about.
And that's up by the hospital?
Yeah.
But we might have to be prepared for that if we're saying get off the street.
But the code already says they can't do that with campers or trailers, period. I forget which one it was.
I mean, we've got campers. Well, I know that's against the law by running their cord across the sidewalk to the, up to their house.
I guess I'm comfortable letting Dave and the chief come to, come up with a proposal.
Because that, I mean, that's a thought too. I mean, if they don't park in the streets, then they're not your problem anymore, but they could be somebody else's.
What's it, what's it, unlicensed vehicles in the street? Say, somebody's got an unlicensed, unrunning vehicle parked in the street?
That falls under nuisance.
In the street?
In the street.
Pretty sure they can't do more than 48 hours.
Well, because I'm pretty sure that falls under the nuisance.
I mean, nuisance, when they talk about nuisance vehicles, I think of how it words it, but it seems to me it doesn't matter if they're licensed or unlicensed, but they might spell out something different.
I think it says...
Unregistered, I mean, but...
I'm pretty sure it falls under that nuisance vehicle.
I'll look and see.
If the vehicle is just have it up to date.
I know abandoned vehicles too, but that's a little different. That's when you can't find the owner. It's been there for whatever.
But it becomes your issue if he pulls it.
Yes.
With no plates on it.
But you can't, by law, you can legally have an unlicensed, uninsured vehicle in the street. Can't be on public roadway, can it?
Well, so, we dealt with that here a while ago with a couple of vehicles. The one did not have plates, but it was inoperable. The other one didn't have plates. It was operable, but it was still within that 30-day time frame of being bought.
They're supposed to be moved within 48 hours, every 48 hours?
Twenty-seven, twenty-four.
Is it 24?
Oh, is it 24? 24, right?
24 in the street, 48 in the boulevard, I believe.
The boulevard.
And then we had the issue where the guy did not remove the plates from the other seller.
Right.
So, you're thinking you can have a vehicle in the street without plates on it?
Yeah. I mean, if it's within the 30 days of the bill of sale, it's not legal.
But they have to show you that. They got proof to give them.
They're going to prove, I mean...
And they have, at the same time, would have to provide proof of insurance.
If we make a stop, it's going to be operated.
Right. So, it's got to be moving before they're going to stop them.
Here it is, 69.06, parking for certain purposes illegal. No person shall park a vehicle upon public par operty for more than 24 hours unless otherwise limited under the provisions of 69.01 of this chapter for any of the following principal purposes: for sale, displaying the vehicle for sale, repairing, advertising, and merchandise sales.
Oh, crap, advertising. You can advertise after 30 days.
So, yeah, I think that Dave and the chief can come up with something and bring it back to us.
Do you guys have any specific thoughts as far as the semis being parked on city streets? Right now, it's 24 hours.
I don't think they should be parked on the streets anyway. Because if they're in front of a stop sign, we're kind of used to it. We drive, we know there's a stop sign there, but somebody knew. I hate to see somebody get hurt bad because they didn't see the stop sign.
What's your recommendation to us?
Oh, the semis?
The semis. You guys patrol the streets every day.
I don't know. You know, semis, if it's the signage that we're concerned about, maybe change the distance from the stop sign.
But then they'd be blocking, they'd be blocking the driveway or the...
Exactly.
The roads. I mean, it just goes back to they shouldn't be on the street.
Well, I think we have to have a certain amount of time. You know, there are semis that drag down the streets and they're unloading an appliance or delivering something. We've got to allow them to have an hour or two.
Delivery trucks would be exempt from that.
We're talking about the ones that I know that are parking on the street because it's staying overnight.
Yeah.
The code says within 10 feet of that intersection.
I think that's a state law, isn't it?
Ten, ten feet.
Ten feet. We know that's more than...
That's too close.
Yeah.
You can never see the stop sign.
Yeah. We can put something together and pass it around and see what, see where we go from there.
Thanks, Tim. Item 16, resolution approving construction contract and bond for the construction of the Cresco wastewater treatment plant aged-related equipment replacement.
This is a contract and bond for Blazek's to get started on the project.
I'll move that.
Second it.
Roll call.
Buska?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Item 17, discuss comprehensive plan update and timeline.
So, I put this on, last year, we did the proposals with MSA, CETA, and Upper Explorer Land. I know there was discussion about trying to do it as fast as possible. Typically, they were nine to 12 months. So, she's just wondering when you guys want to get started, if you guys want to try and speed up the process, or just go through the normal process.
Advice, Mayor?
I, if we're not waiting for data on anything, then I would say let's go ahead and start, get the process rolling.
So, start right away?
Yeah. As long as we have everything that we need for the comprehensive plan.
One of the things I talked to Scott Honecky about is, I know there's Division Street on there and some other streets. And I took Seventh Street and kind of did some math. So, if we have to replace a street that needs new concrete, water, sewer, sanitary sewer, I think Seventh Street was around $1,300 a foot. And Scott said 1,200 is an average that they use. So, that's just something to keep in mind. I think the numbers on there for Division Street were like 1.1 or million or so.
I'm confused as to...
Yeah, that's the capital improvement.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just...
Never mind.
Comprehensive plan, strategic plan.
Yep, we're on acumen.
For going ahead with...
Never mind.
That will be coming up after I get it back from the department heads.
I mean, I guess it's been a while since we had this. Why are they not presenting us with the proposed timeline that we can...
So, originally, when we wanted to do it, we were kind of in a let's rip and get it done because Michelle was preparing. So, we had talked about trying to speed up the process.
But I don't have that timeline. I don't know what timeline you're asking us to speed up.
Nine to 12 months.
Okay.
Go shorter than that, or just the normal nine to 12 months.
What are we taking out by asking to speed it up? She did not say, I can ask. See, that's what I don't know.
Did they give us a presentation each one?
They did.
And do you remember what month? We could go back and watch it.
I think it was...
September, October?
Yeah. It was about this time last year.
The person could go back and watch it.
And all of them were right around that nine to 12 month was their standard timeframe.
So, I guess my question is, what are they proposing to take out in order to speed it up?
Or how they would speed it up?
Yeah.
Okay. I can ask that.
I mean, I'm all for speeding it up, but I don't know what I would be agreeing to.
Maybe meeting sooner?
Should we have them, should we have them come to our next meeting and discuss it as far as what they would propose?
A little refresher course?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would be good.
I can talk to Michelle.
I just started thinking about this again.
So, now it takes nine to 12, and we want to be four to six or something?
Yeah, they kind of talked, I think it was six to eight that we're kind of looking at.
Six to eight wouldn't bother me.
Where are these people from?
Upper Explorer Land's from Decorum.
Oh.
So, I believe there's a bunch of meetings that you'd have to go through, go through the whole process.
So, is this some requirement that we have to do a comprehensive plan?
If you want to annex, you do.
If we what?
Want to annex, you do.
Oh.
I think that was our step one.
Actually, I mean, we really learned, I think the last comprehensive plan, which we did, you know, practically in the last century, not exactly 2010 or something like that.
2012.
I think you learn a lot. What's important to the citizens? What are they liking? What do they not like?
If I remember, I went to a zoning meeting back in May or June. If I remember right, I've got the book in there. I'll go look. We may want to include the planning and zoning committee.
I'm sure that was set during it. We did not start it last fall because the rural housing Iowa grant came available. So, we put that on hold to that grant and then come back to it. So, I'll have her get the agreement ready, and she can maybe come present next meeting.
At work.
Thanks, Nikki. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.